Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody back to the Thursday, June 23, 2022 Roanoke County School Board Meeting. Apologize we're a little bit late coming out of closed session. But Mr. Hudson, if you would read us out of closed, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Roanoke County School Board come out of closed session for the following: To discuss ongoing personnel matters under investigation pursuant to personnel exemption at 2.23711A and 1 of the Code of Virginia, and to discuss the investigation of a student matter pursuant to the Scholastic Record exemption at 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Also moved to certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, the roll?
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chani.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 2.03, action from closed session. I move that the... Move to approve students' numbers 20, 21, 20, 22, numbers 32 through 35 for religious exemption from Roanoke County Public Schools.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chani.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Again, welcome, everybody. Good to see so many smiling faces in the crowd. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of changes in the agenda? Anybody? Speaker, superintendent? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Madam Clerk, the roll?
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chani.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item number five, Hearing of Citizens and Delegations. At this time, during this portion of the meeting, citizens, including students, parents, employees, and Roanoke County citizens are invited to address the Board on matters of public concern in exercise of their First Amendment rights. We do ask speakers to be respectful and civil in their comments, and to address the Board Chair rather than individual Board members. Speakers have three minutes to make their comments, and will be signaled by the lights on the podium when the three minutes is up. Please be aware that the Board members listen to comments but do not respond. We have five speakers, I believe, this evening, the first of which, Michelle Brooks. Welcome, Ms. Brooks.
How are y'all today?
Thank you.
Not only are professionals paid the least in Roanoke County compared to surrounding districts, but librarians will face an insurmountable and unnecessary workload by enacting the policy of having them read every single book that they want to order and writing a blurb on it. At the June 7 work session, Dr. McClung gave the results of the survey from all employees. The second biggest complaint was not being treated as a professional and not having voices heard nor considered. Dr. McClung stated that Roanoke County Schools needed to work on that between the central office and employees. However, have the librarians' concerns been considered? There aren't enough hours in the day to complete all the responsibilities on a librarian's plate now, and essentially, the school board... or the policy wants to double it. It's just too much. For those that choose to remain a librarian in the school district, you are a saint, because I couldn't do it. You are also aware that the removal of "When Aiden Became a Brother" has weighed very heavily on my heart since numerous emails. I want to remind everyone that there was a case in Virginia just settled in favor of the plaintiff Gavin Grimm. This case, Grimm versus Gloucester County School Board, does not have the same scenario of a book being removed from a library due to a transgender protagonist, but there are some parallels that the case can easily be applied to for the removal of a book from the library and given an alternative checkout location. The judge's final summation of that case stated in part, "The Board drafted a policy so arbitrary that it cannot provide consistent treatment among the very individuals it discriminates against." Later, the judge says, "The policy bears an eerie similarity to stigmatic discrimination in the separate but equal context, which produces deeply corrosive irreversible harm across a human life." Pulling the book from HLH Library and placing it into the counselor's office is, in my opinion, the same as the judge ruled in Grimm v Gloucester. It's the stigmatic discrimination of separate but equal. The SOL v US.13 has us teach Brown v Board of Education, and that separate is not equal. Isn't this the same scenario of the book being available to be checked out in the guidance office but not in the main library? It's still in circulation, but nobody can tell me how it's available to be checked out. I really don't want to see an avoidable and unnecessary lawsuit occur due to the school system created an alternative location for LGBTQ books to be checked out from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Next speaker, Winter Schausberger.
Around your docket tonight. The issues with the proposed media selection policy are too extensive to fully explain in my three-minute allowance, but I will briefly summarize my key issues. Firstly, RCPS cannot afford the policy. The Magic Treehouse series, this series, is a popular lower elementary series consisting of 64-chapter books, 44 nonfiction companions, and four graphic novels, which are a retelling of the original books. According to the proposed policy, two elementary librarians are required to read and review each of these books. Based on the length of their audiobooks, it would take those librarians 215 hours and 30 minutes to read the series, not including the new graphic novels. Using the lowest and highest possible salaries for a school librarian employed by RCPS, I determined that the cost of labor to read this series is anywhere in the range of $5,932 to $9,725. Just this stack of six books that I've brought here today would cost RCPS $440 to $722 in labor. Since the librarians will need 39 school days to read this series, RCPS will need to employ additional staff to complete the other necessary library tasks. Secondly, this policy is not objective or transparent. To ensure objectivity, volunteer parents, teachers, librarians, counselors, and administrators should be appointed to the appeals committees by a randomizer and not chosen purposefully by any one person. To ensure transparency, the reasoning behind the decisions to ban or retain challenged books should be documented with personal information redacted and kept in a way that is easily accessed by any interested party. Learning about decisions made by but not reported by RCPS creates the appearance of devious decision-makers. Additionally, this policy depreciates the qualifications of our school librarians. In the proposed policy, there's a list of criteria similar to that of the previous policy for determining whether a media is fit for a school library. Recently, a book was removed from the Horn Library despite the fact that the highly qualified and trained school librarians employed by RCPS determined that the book met each of the criteria to remain in the library. You hired and trained these individuals to do their jobs, and then you allowed other unqualified individuals to supersede them in the decision-making process. Finally, this policy is superfluous. RCPS utilized an opt-out for guardians when they had concerns about a visiting speaker, about their student participating in surveys, and about masking. Everyone agrees that guardians should have the right to decide what library materials are appropriate for their students. An opt-out is the most efficient and effective policy for guardians to exercise that right while protecting the First Amendment rights of the other students.
Thank you. Next speaker, Erin Levering. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Nicely. My name is Erin Levering. I'm a parent of two children attending Cave Spring High School, and I'm a teacher by profession. In my 25 years in education, I've seen colleagues, department chairs, principals, superintendents, school boards, and others in leadership roles come and go. I've seen many different policies come and go. I've also often seen a lack of understanding from the powers that be of how policy changes can affect the day-to-day workings of the classroom teacher. It's a common complaint of teachers that we are not respected as the professionals we are. Our training and professionalism are questioned and discounted, as we're told to do... how to do our jobs, by others who often have never been in the classroom beyond their experience as a student. This proposed media selection policy does the same to our school librarians. I know how this'll go down. At the start, our librarians will strive to follow the policy while continuing to keep our library selections current and relevant to our students. They'll spend their personal time in the evenings and on the weekends doing the necessary reading to meet the requirements of the new policy. They'll try really hard, and they'll get tired, and really, really, really tired. They'll reach the point where something's gotta give, and they'll stop reading on their own time. They'll stop adding books to the libraries because it'll just be too much. They'll do what they can during their contracted work hours, and what can't be done won't get done. They'll feel guilty, they'll be discouraged, and they'll feel they failed their students. Parents have the ability to prevent their children from checking out any book they feel is inappropriate. That's their right and their duty as a parent. This proposed new policy, however, is pushing us toward a place where individual parents will have process to prevent, or at least obstruct, all children from checking out books that they feel are inappropriate for their children. It is logistically impossible for our librarians to read every book that goes on their shelves. There simply aren't enough hours in the day. This is where their extensive training and network of colleagues and professional organizations come in, to provide support and to share the load, so to speak. We need to trust our librarians to be the professionals they are, the professionals we require them to be in order to get their jobs. This means they need to be given the autonomy to fill our libraries with as many and as varied a list of titles as they possibly can, bound by the age and developmental level of the students they serve, not by the political and social agendas of parents, school boards, or other community members, under the guise of a new, updated policy. The policy as written is unnecessarily burdensome on our already overextended school librarians. It skirts dangerously close to opening the door to censorship, and it's providing a solution to a problem that simply does not exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Laura Bowman. Welcome, Ms. Bowman.
Laura Bowman, Windsor Hills District. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Nicely. Your new media policy selection... media selection policy is wasteful, onerous, and biased. It's poorly thought out and impossible to execute without collateral damage to children, staff, and instruction. I shelved books in my child's school library for two years, and one of the most popular authors was Rick Riordan, author of the Percy Jackson series. His newest book, Daughter of the Deep, has 352 pages and takes 11 hours to read. Under the policy, two librarians would have to read that book, so for five and a half hours of two school days, both would sit at their desks reading just that one book, leaving hardly any time at all to do the other work required of them, as they have classes of children in their libraries the other days of the week. The average cost to taxpayers for two librarians to read and review this one book out of the more than 300 they usually order each year is $750. How anyone in their right mind could think this an effective use of professional staff's time and taxpayer dollars is beyond me. I'm truly astonished to see the complaint of one apparently well-connected parent create the impetus for a policy change that is so obviously and deeply flawed. The policy is incredibly disrespectful of librarians' professional abilities and time, and is based in fear and prejudice. The end result of this policy will be far, far fewer new books available to students. Many kids rely solely on the school library for their reading material, and this policy illustrates lack of care for kids and about their access to new books. This policy is not pro-child, nor is it pro-literacy. Parents are fully capable of controlling the media their own children consume and may flag any book or subject matter as unsuitable for their own children to check out of their school library in the online portal Destiny. What they should not be able to do is steamroll over the rights of other parents. Very, very few books have ever been challenged in the school system over the years. This policy is a solution in search of a problem, and I'm questioning the Board's sense of propriety, integrity, and fiscal responsibility. I looked at 20 other school systems in the state, and none of them have this policy. Additionally, there are dozens of reputable online resources librarians can refer to versus reading every word of every book they order. If there's subject matter this Board doesn't want in its school libraries, have the courage to come right out and name it, instead of hiding behind the staff and creating policies that once again ignore the input and qualifications of the professionals with advanced degrees the school system employs. On the specific book, "When Aiden Became a Brother," I'll say this: It's convenient to deny another person's existence and life struggles, and in turn, not have to feel their pain and show care for them. Imagine a school board that exhibited such deeply ingrained fear, bias, and prejudice through its policymaking that it hurt the children it claimed to care about and was supposed to be serving. I don't have to imagine it. I'm looking right at it.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. And our last speaker, Brian Handy. Welcome, Mr. Handy.
Glad to see everybody could make it tonight. I'm Brian Handy. I live in the Hollins District. In the fall of '68, my mother's high school integrated. Like most senior girls, she was focused on her senior prom. She was looking forward to it. When the spring of '68 rolled around, to her astonishment, prom was canceled. When she inquired why, turns out, there wasn't enough room on the dance floor for all the new students. Here we are, 54 years later. Sadly, we don't have enough room on our bookshelves either. Roanoke County Public Schools believes in and celebrates a positive, diverse, and inclusive community. How can we claim to celebrate diversity when we're pulling it off our shelves? Roanoke County doesn't have enough teachers, instructional aides, bus drivers, bus aides, or cafeteria workers. Maybe instead of working towards policies that prevent a few people from being offended, we could work towards finding enough staff, getting the Burton Center project underway, or figuring out a way to get the capital improvement plan back on schedule. Seems like that would help a lot more people instead of the interests of a few.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item number six, Consent Agenda. We do have a number of items on the consent agenda, actually 13, because items have been gone over in either work sessions or... in a previous work session or a previous meeting, so they are not something that we are just glossing over here, but have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, the roll?
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chani.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item number seven, Presentations and Recognitions. Introduction of New Administrators for the 2022-23 School Year. Mr. Jim Bradshaw.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Dr. Nicely. Tonight, I'm very excited to introduce two more administrators to our team. First, I have April Young. April comes to us from Roanoke City. She's currently the principal, and I took notes, because I knew I'd mess this up, at Fairview Elementary School, and she's been there or been the principal for 17 years. So, we're very excited to have April join our administrative team, and I think she's going to be a great asset to our entire school system. So, April, congratulations and welcome.
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 She's gonna be where?
Next, I'd like to bring out...
She's gonna be where?
She's gonna be at Glen Cove. I'm sorry if I didn't mention that.
I don't believe you did.
Glen Cove Elementary School.
Very good.
Yes. Next, if Virginia Sharp and Julie Noe would come up, they'd like to introduce their new assistant principal.
Julie wants to introduce?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Nicely. It is our pleasure to introduce to you our new assistant principal at Bat Creek and Clearbrook Elementary, Brienne Dooley. She comes to us from Roanoke City, where she was an AP split between Horningside and Wasena Elementarys, and we feel confident that she's going to be a great addition, not only to our schools but to the district as a whole.
Wonderful.
Welcome.
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 Mr. Bradshaw, can we... Would you like to take a picture with the administrators?
Absolutely. You guys would love to have a picture. That'd be fantastic.
Get it right here.
Right over here.
Item number eight, action items. Dr. Stigall.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Nicely. This evening, I bring before you policy 6.44, athletics and extracurricular activities. This is the policy the board asked me to bring before you. If the board's interested in adding sixth graders into playing middle school sports, those necessary changes have been made to this policy, and we just need your approval to move forward with that. Any questions about anything? Basically, all we did was add six through eight and changed some minor language there.
Any questions? Make a motion to approve item number 8.01.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fashani.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number 8.02, approval of adding six SRO deputies for elementary schools. Dr. Nicely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Over the past four years, Roanoke County Schools has established a strong relationship with public safety officials in Roanoke County, and this includes our Roanoke County Police, Roanoke County Fire and EMS, Roanoke County Sheriff's Office, Vincent Police. RCPS and these public safety partners take school safety and security seriously, working through the Roanoke County Safety Task Force, and investing countless hours and resources planning, preparing, and proactively taking steps to enhance safety and security. Having armed, trained, law enforcement-certified school resource officers in our schools is an indispensable component of school safety and security. While some areas of the state and country have sought to scale back the number of SROs on school campuses, Roanoke County Schools affirms the need for having SROs on our school campuses and believe that when they respond in a timely way and according to their training, SROs are an essential asset to public safety and security at our schools. We have an established goal, and we've requested that an SRO be provided for each RCPS school as a public safety need. As a measure to add to the number of SROs serving Roanoke County Schools, the Roanoke County Sheriff's Office has offered to fund equipment, hire and train four part-time SRO deputies to supplement existing SRO police officers and SRO sheriff deputies. The sheriff's office would be reimbursed the cost of salaries. The sheriff's office is willing to hire and train two additional SRO deputies for a total addition of six, provided they be reimbursed for equipment costs as well as the salary. The additional SRO deputies will also need vehicles to be provided. In order to expedite the hiring and training of these additional SRO deputies, staff recommends the appropriation of $180,000 from personnel budget to fund salaries for four SRO deputies and salaries and equipment for two SRO deputies, with the understanding the school board will request the board of supervisors assume the responsibility of this funding as a public safety need. So we recommend the approval of $180,000 for this purpose.
Yes, Mr. Greenway.
Dr. Nicely, so you broke it down in four and two, right? We're asking for the funding of all six, though, right?
Right. It's broken down that way because what the sheriff's office was able to do is provide the funding for the equipment for four additional SRO deputies. We would provide the salary piece. The desire would be to go ahead and see if they could come up with two additional beyond the four, but we would need to pick up the equipment costs as well as the salary for those additional two, for a total of six additional.
Okay, but none of that comes out of the educational funds. We're approving it, but we're expecting to get reimbursed.
Well, we're going to request that.
Right, that's right.
Yes. What I'm asking you all this evening is to go ahead and appropriate that, and then we're going to request, you know, from the county that they consider reimbursing that fund.
Okay, and so I want to thank the sheriff's office, first off, for making this possible, and Brent, who helped with this. You know, we recognize as a board the need for, we want, an SRO in every school, right? We've talked about that. So I appreciate you bringing that forward, the sheriff's office and Brent, for making this possible. We need additional funding. We're asking the board supervisors for that funding to get a resource officer in every elementary school, and it needs to be done, and it needs to be done as quick as possible. Realize staffing is, you know, it's not the easiest thing in today's climate, but that's where we're headed, and that's what we're hoping for. So thank everyone for doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think what we want to get optimum is the one at every elementary school. The other option would be that we would have eight, and we would have two that would break up part-time at the other school. So we'd have two schools, correct? I mean, that's the ultimate thing we'd like to see.
Sheriff's Office, right, currently provides two SRO deputies. This additional, this appropriation and, you know, contingent upon their being able to staff that would add an additional six.
What is the, how would you vision the rotation of this, where they would go to schools that were close in proximity as far as geographically?
I think that would make the most sense, to keep those response times as short as possible, but, you know, we'll consult and rely on the sheriff's office and our, you know, public safety officials to help us make those determinations.
Yeah, and, you know, and anything we can do, and I've said this from the beginning, you know, it's too late once it happens. And that's, then we'll be sitting around saying, I wish we would have, so, you know, I'm so glad we're taking this step. I'd like to see that we would be able to, wherever the funding can come from, whether it be the county, wherever it would come from, the other side, but we need to go ahead and work towards one in every school. The deterrent you see, when you write up, I was at school today, an elementary school, and some of the kids were, it was summer school, some of the kids out, you know, in recess. And, you know, it's, once they get outside that building, they're very vulnerable. And once they're inside, if you've got a sheriff's car, police car, sitting outside, it's marked, they're going to think twice about going to that school. And also, if you know that that is staffed with a police officer or a sheriff's deputy, that they are there with a gun to protect that school. And that's a deterrent when somebody rides through the parking lot. So, and I appreciate what the sheriff's department's done in the past. I said it at other board meetings. I've seen them on site numerous times, and it's so comforting to see that, and we need to work towards that full time, so, you know, it's too late once it happens.
Let's be clear, we did ask for this four years ago, right? We didn't get the funding then, and we're not going away this time. We want the funding to get this done for an SRO in every school. It's public safety, and it should be done. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the, just one quick question. $180,000 comes out of?
It's going to come out of our personnel budget. We are going to, well, two things. One, we're going to make the request that the county consider taking on that responsibility. Regardless, when we revise our local budget, we will ask that this be, you know, actually formally included as a, as an additional expenditure. But currently, we need to go and get this ball rolling, we need to get these folks to SRO training school, and so we would like to absorb that out of our current personnel budget.
Thank you, Dr. Nicely. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 8.02, the approval of adding six SROs for our elementary schools with $180,000.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greenway.
Absolutely.
Ms. Fashani.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. We have no informational agenda items this evening. Item number 10, report by superintendent, Dr. Nicely.
Good to stay at the podium. So, two things, I'll keep it brief, but just want to congratulate all of our principals and assistant principals, our district administrators. Two weeks ago, we had our annual leadership meetings and discussed some safety issues, some thoughts about, looking at grading practices, and just kind of laid some foundation for some good work for the future. But I just so much appreciate and just want to express gratitude and confidence in the leadership that we have in our school principals, our assistant principals. We really have a great group of professionals who work on our schools, as well as I appreciate our district leadership as well, and just had two good days of that. That's not the only training and professional development they do, but those are two concentrated days that we enjoy each year. Yesterday, got to travel down to Chesterfield County. Mr. Linden went as well, but we did two things. One, we got to see our instructional team do a presentation for the Virginia's For Learners Innovation Network. This is a group that we participate in, or have for the last two years. We participated in the first round, and then again for the, it's actually called Vailon 3.0. This is all about school districts across Virginia coming together with different problems of practice that they would like to network and rely on, not only some professional coaching, but also just the power of the group, the collaboration, working with other school divisions. So we're moving forward, for us, our long-term goal of having our Opportunity Ready certifications in place, and proud to say that we're going to have those pilot schools in place for this coming year. Our team did a wonderful job making that presentation to their group, and just real proud to be able to, you know, to see that, and thank them for their hard work. And so we also got to tour the CTE center there, at the Whole Street Center there in Chesterfield County, and always picking up new ideas and looking at different places, and really look forward to continue the momentum that we have in getting our own new CTE center off the ground and built and ready to go for our students as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Nicely. All right. Item number, well, or, excuse me, item number 11, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, during COVID, we certainly had a performance gap in our schools because we tried the best we could with online and being able to have virtual learning, but we know that wasn't face-to-face learning. So we know that we're playing that catch-up game, if you will, to be able to make sure that these kids are back, these students are back on the level they should be. And I know that we'll continue that. I think, too, that parent conference face-to-face, knowing that you're able to talk to that teacher and find out information, I think that's important. I think it's, it gives them the feeling that they have maybe a bond with the teacher rather than just seeing them on a camera screen or seeing them, you know, in passing or something like that. I think it gives them the opportunity, and I think that's important. But we still got to, you know, continue to address these academic needs with whatever we have, our resources to be able to get us back up to where we need to be. You know, as far as, you know, as far as the, you know, the librarians go, I think that, you know, there may be opportunities. I know I'm just one board member, but I'm just saying there may be opportunities, there could be some kind of, you know, whether it be a stipend or whether it be something that may be available. If we see this is going to be a burden, if it's going to be that much more on to our librarians who have filled in at other places when they weren't in the library, and if we see that, then I think it's an opportunity for us to think whether or not there's an opportunity for us to be able to, I don't know whether you call it a stipend, but it may be something extra, you know, that might be, whether it be time or something else. But I think it's, maybe we could look at, and I'm just one board member, and I just thought of it, so, anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Greenway.
Sure, thank you. I think we had a, Dr. Nicely, you're going to have to help me here. We had a climate survey of staff, and roughly 75% were happy or very satisfied in Roanoke County.
I don't remember, so the-
We brought it at the work session.
Right, Dr. McClung presented the, sort of the strengths that were identified, the top most repeated answers, as well as the, you know, things that they'd like to see different, you know, salaries, obviously, top of the list in terms of concerns.
Absolutely.
But in terms of, you know, being satisfied with the job, I forget the exact percentage, but it was a high number.
Between those two, 75. So I thought that was a good survey, and I'm happy that, you know, our staff and folks that work in the school system are happy with the climate and the way things are being done at this time. As far as the librarians, yes, we need, you know, the policy, we didn't approve, I mean, we didn't draft it, staff drafted it. We simply approved policies, but, you know, the dialogue can continue to do things a little better. That's the way things ought to work. We ought to continue the dialogue, but, you know, we have policies set forth and put before us, and we approve them. So that's where we're at in this process. I want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. Let's continue the dialogue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Greenway. Ms. Fashani.
Well, congratulations to our new staff. Excited to work with you guys. Welcome to Roanoke County. It's a wonderful place to work, and we're lucky to have you. You know, in November, we had elections, and the people voted. There were four out of five seats up for grabs, and three of them were contested, and overwhelmingly, this is your school board. People voted for us because they believe, like we do, that parents have a stake in their children's education. They wanted us to get back to basics. They want us to teach about science and English and math and history, but most importantly, I think they voted for us to put our children first. And if you remember, throughout Virginia and in our nation, we witnessed a growing number of parents becoming concerned, increasingly alarmed about some of the books that were being put into our school libraries, and it really was a part of a diverse classroom library materials initiative. While most of these books focused on introducing kids to different cultures and ethnicities, parents discovered that it also focused on sexual diversity. And not all these books, but some of these books contained a very sexually explicit language, flagrant descriptions of fondling, masturbation, orgasms, oral sex, sexual intercourse. These are all tough things for people to hear, even here in this boardroom, rape and incest. So not only were some of these topics put in books at all grade levels, don't get me wrong, it wasn't just middle school or high school, it was elementary, but it was almost, to me, it was kept somewhat secretive. And so I want people to know that I love literature. I love reading. Reading opens up doors for many children, and we get to read about topics that are unlike ourselves, we get to explore ideas, we get to see things reflected in ourselves and learn how we're similar and dissimilar. But it's equally important to remember and understand that parents know what is best for their children. And sometimes, as parents, we don't always know what's in the library. So to opt out, do this, let's just opt out, not every parent has the time or the money or the ability or the know-how to do that. So in my opinion, regarding this library policy, it's important for us, our policy to be proactive and not reactive. We can't wait until a kid picks a book off the shelf, questions it, doesn't understand what it is. The burden then realizes is on that child who has questions to come to a parent, and then the parent then has the burden to ask the questions and read the book and file a complaint and so on and so on. So this policy is proactive. Ultimately, by having our librarians, you know, read these books and review the books, we are being proactive. So I think it's important to understand that we have an obligation to parents and to students so that our public schools, in our public schools, our children are not subjected to pornography or any other inappropriate content. And we must continue to put our children first. And we must continue to put our children first, and as long as I serve on the school board, I'm going to ask this question to myself every single day, what are the best interests of our children? And we have to continue to put our children first, and whether or not you agree with me or not, it is what it is. I think we're going to work through it, and I think we'll get there. And I'm happy as a board that we're approving this policy. And again, like Mr. Greenway said, we did not write the policy, we asked for a policy to be written, and here we are today. I'd like to make a couple more comments, I know that was kind of lengthy, so I apologize, but I'm so excited that we're going to have sixth graders playing sports. This is a real big deal for a long time, for the longest time when I moved to Roanoke County, I couldn't believe sixth graders couldn't play sports. I asked the question, and the question always, the answer to my question was always, that's just what it is. That's how the board said. Well, okay, well, I don't think that's a, such a great policy. So we put Rhonda to task, and she has some questions, and we got some answers, and I'm glad to see that we're going to be allowing our sixth graders the opportunity to earn the spot. It doesn't mean that all sixth graders are playing sports, it means they have to earn it. And there are plenty of sixth graders and who will earn those spots, and as we see eighth graders being pulled up to the JV teams, it only makes sense in terms of numbers and overuse injuries and of all the other things that we see going on today. Regarding the safety, I just want to thank Mr. Hudson one more time. I thanked him and Sheriff Orange for helping us with this endeavor to make our schools the safest that they possibly can be. I'm happy that we are going to be, that as a school board, we came together and looked at the fencing issues at a lot of our schools, that was an issue at my school, and it took my principal to talk to me about it, and we got the ball moving, and next thing you know, we're taking care of all of them, and I love that. I love when we do things, and we say we've got an issue, and let's just make our schools even better and safer. So thank you, thank you all for working together, I think we're doing a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Fashani. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, to reiterate her comments, I'm very excited. As a former SRO and as well as Sheriff Orange as a former SRO, we understand the importance of having people in our buildings to keep our kids safe. It's one of my number one priorities as a parent, having children in our schools, that we're providing a safe environment for everybody, teachers, kids, and the ability to be able to do this has been great, working together with the schools and kind of wearing two hats at once, but there's so much more involved than just being, you know, a deputy or police officer walking through the school. You really become ingrained, and I know I've said this in a couple meetings prior, but there's a lot more to the job, and I'll just give you one example, and I won't name names, but we had a child in an elementary school, you know, having a fit, basically a breakdown, and he only wanted to talk to a specific deputy who visits his school every day. That's all, that's who he wanted to talk to, nobody else could calm the kid down. So we send that gentleman out there, and that situation was resolved very quickly, and it's just an example of how you become ingrained, you get to know the kids, you develop positive relationships with them, and it goes on through life. I mean, honestly, I've been out of it for about six, seven years now, I've been with the sheriff's office, but I still have former students contact me today and will ask random questions. I've hired four at the sheriff's office, former students that I coached and developed great relationships with through the programs they have like YOVOSO and YADAP, and it's just a great opportunity for the community, law enforcement, schools to come together to accomplish the, one solid goal of keeping everybody safe and just being a positive influence. Sixth graders, I'm really glad that Cheryl brought this up. You know, I coached when I was an SRO, seventh and eighth graders, and I can definitely tell you this is going to be great because kids are travel, playing travel ball now, kids are so talented, and to let them sit on the bench for a year and just, they can't practice, they can't play, it's really a disservice. I think it's a great thing, and sports also provides, you know, a kid to stay out of trouble, to stay positive, to keep their grades good. I mean, all these things are required when you play sports, you can't have bad grades, you got to have good behavior, and, you know, Coach and I, I got to see that firsthand because I had a couple kids throughout the years that, you know, they would struggle with behavior, and sports was really, I think, the only thing that kept them on the straight and narrow in that area. I'd like to say congratulations to our newly hired administrators, I'm really excited to see all that they're going to accomplish moving forward, and as far as, you know, the library policy and what everybody has said, you know, I can't say it more elegantly than Ms. Fashani has already said. I agree with everything she said, I hate to be that way, but when you're the last guy to speak and somebody really just puts it out there so nicely, there's just nothing else I can add. I agree with everything you said, and appreciate everybody's hard work on this, and also, like has been stated, you know, and I've stated for some of the people that have reached out, you know, we write, we don't write policies, staff writes policies, we rely on their knowledge, education and ability, and, you know, if we find out the policy's not working, that's not written in stone, we'll be back to the drawing board, you know, trying to figure out how to still reach our goal, whatever that may be. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and always willing to listen to everyone's opinion, even if I disagree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Few things tonight, it was, it was nice, we all got to attend a leadership retreat over at the Vinton War Memorial a couple weeks ago. Just like to thank Dr. Nicely and the staff here at Central Office, the leadership and the collaboration, and to see all of our administrators from the different schools and here at Central Office get together and share their ideas, and already, we were two weeks, maybe not even two weeks, at the end of last school year, and they're getting together, getting ready for next school year. It was, it was an exciting two days, I know, and saw some very good stuff there, so, including the Raptor system, which I know, getting into the security, we're excited about new security system that will be in our schools that Dr. Stegall has been leading the way with. And that leads me into Mr. Hudson and his efforts with our SROs. Getting those SROs in all of our elementary schools is a top priority for us, and we're halfway there at this point, so we, we'd like to see all 16 of our elementary schools have them, but we're a whole lot closer now than we were previously. And know that it is truly helpful that both Mr. Hudson is in our schools often and Sheriff Orange, not to diminish the job that Chief Hall and the Roanoke Police Department does for us, because they do a tremendous job also, but knowing that those two are as involved as they are in our school district is just very helpful, so I definitely appreciate that. As Dr. Nicely mentioned, he and I did have a chance to go to Chesterfield yesterday to look at their CTE Center, amazing facility, it's only 12 years old, and they're already making some improvements and changes to it. Just to see the things that they do down there was inspirational, and looking forward to our meeting, joint meeting with the board of supervisors on July 12th, where we will hear from the citizens or the committee that we put together on the new BCAT, and get an update from them as to the scope of the project, and we hope to have some exciting information to announce there as far as maybe a potential future site. So I do think our relationship, the board of supervisors, I did sit in on their meeting last week on one of their work sessions, and all five of those board members are on board, completely on board with this project, so I think, I heard yesterday when we were in Chesterfield, somebody said, if you want significant progress, you need to develop significant relationships, and I think we've done that with the board of supervisors, so I hope the significant progress is right around the corner. And with that, meeting adjourned.